Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the Lumberton Independent School District Performing Arts Center. My name is Wayne McDaniel and I have the honor and privilege to serve as your county judge and I want to thank you for that opportunity. The reason we're here this evening is for a special meeting of the Hardin County Commissioners Court. And before I call this meeting to order, I'd like to introduce you to your county commissioners. First, we have Commissioner LW Cooper Jr. He's your county commissioner in precinct one and encompasses parts of Sillsby, Coontz, and Lumberton. Next is Commissioner Chris Kirkendall, he's your county commissioner in precinct two. And precinct two encompasses parts of Sillsby and Coontz and also includes the communities of Honey Island and Village Mill. Next is Commissioner Amanda Young, our newest member of the court. She's your county commissioner in precinct three, which includes Sour Lake, part of Lumberton, and the West Hardin County communities of Batson, Saratoga, Thicket, and Botan. And last but not least, we have county commissioner Alvin Roberts, who serves precinct four. And precinct four covers the Lumberton area that is not contained in precincts one and three. Want to thank ladies and gentlemen for being here this evening for this special meeting. Want to also recognize a few other officials before we begin. We have our county clerk, Linda Austin. We have our county auditor, Amanda Gore. And our county attorney. What did I say? Angela Gore, I'm sorry, I might be a little nervous. And our county attorney, Matthew Minnie. We also have our sheriff here tonight, Sheriff Mark Davis. And he has a few of his deputies here with him, thank you sheriff. We have Judge Melissa Minton, Justice of the Peace in precinct five. Our county treasurer is here, Deborah McWilliams. And our county tax assessor collector, Shirley Cook is also here. Our county constable, who also is the Lumberton Police Chief, Danny Solons is here, thank you chief, and he's got a few officers with him. Our Lumberton mayor, Don Surratt. Good evening mayor, thank you for hosting us. Uh seated next to the mayor is Ms. Kimberly Klein with Representative White's office. We also have Mr. Rob Starr, the district manager of Lumberton Municipal Utility District. And last but not least, Dr. Tony Tipton, our school superintendent. Dr. Tipton, thank you for having us here tonight and he's provided a few members of his staff to be here to make sure everything runs properly, so thank you for that. If there are any other city, school board, county, or any other elected official, raise your hand because we want to make sure that we don't miss anybody. Yes, sir. Mr. Kirsch, thank you for letting us be here tonight and thank you for being here. Anybody else that I missed? Alright, well with that, all members of the court are present and this meeting is called to order. If everyone will please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Kirkendall, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Matthew Minnie.
Let's pray. Your heavenly father, we come before you tonight, Lord, what an honor and privilege it is to serve the people of Hardin County, Lord, tonight we pray over this meeting. Or we pray that it would be judicious, Lord, and Father, that it would do its intended purpose of gathering information, Lord, for us to make informed decisions. Father, we pray over our county, we pray for our first responders, Lord, we ask you to protect those who protect us, and Lord, we ask these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty just as for all.
Thank you Commissioner Kirkendall, and thank you Mr. Minnie. Before I proceed with the agenda, I'd just like to make the following statement about why we're here this evening and also what to expect. This special meeting of Commissioners Court is taking place this evening to discuss, discuss the proposed development project on FM 421. Some of this proposed development is located within the city limits of Lumberton, while the majority of it is located in unincorporated Hardin County. When the developer first approached us a few years, few years ago, there were already quite a bit of negative remarks being made throughout the community and on social media concerning this project. Most of which were relating to drainage, but those comments also included some concerns about traffic and overcrowding of schools. We stipulated to the developer that they would have to hold at least one, possibly more than one, public meeting with the citizens who reside in and around the area of their proposed development project to assure them and us that they were not going to flood anyone and basically to obtain an acceptance from the neighbors before seeking approval from Commissioners Court. Although I thought that we would be come together before now, we are here tonight. And the reason we're here is to listen to the presentation by the developer, Brampton Essential LP. And that presentation we expect will last about twenty minutes, maybe thirty. After that, I'll start calling on citizens to make comments concerning the presentation and any concerns that you have about the development. Each person will be allowed up to three minutes to speak from the podium right out here in front of us. Each person who speaks will let us know who they are and where they live, now we don't need your address, but we'd like to know the general area where you live. We'd like to know if you are for or against the proposed development project and why. The public comment period will end by seven fifteen PM. And at that time, we will give Brampton Essentials time to respond to your concerns. This meeting will adjourn no later than seven thirty PM. I want to assure you that your Commissioners Court wants to hear from the developer tonight and from the community. However, we are not permitted to comment or interact with anyone during this open meeting. There will be no action taken during this meeting, we're not here tonight to vote on anything, this is a public meeting and this is for informational purposes. I fully expect that all of us will walk away from here tonight with a better understanding of the proposed development and the concerns of neighboring residents. Finally, I respectfully ask that everyone participating in this meeting please conduct themselves in a respectful and polite manner. Please refrain from using profane or abusive language. And please do not personally attack anyone, especially me. By doing so, I believe this meeting will accomplish our overall objective here tonight of gaining a better understanding of our citizens' concerns before this matter comes before Commissioners Court for action. I want to thank everyone for being here tonight and taking your time to be here to hear what has, has to be said by the developer and anybody who wants to make a comment, I thank you for your time as well. So next, we'll go on to item number three on our agenda, presentation to the public by Brampton Essential LP concerning the proposed longleaf subdivision development project on FM 421 in Lumberton. This time, I'll call on Brampton Essential and you're welcome to introduce everybody before you start your presentation or however you'd like to proceed.
Thank you Judge, thank you Commissioners for making this opportunity available to us. And I want to thank all the residents for taking time out of your busy schedules to come and interface with us as well. Let me get to the agenda slide and make sure my controller is working and then we can get started. Okay, so the, the agenda here is not the judge's agenda, this is just the agenda of my presentation. My name is Patrick Hoffman, I'm the project manager for the development. We're calling it Longleaf. That's in keeping with the heritage of the property, we'll talk about that in, in a couple slides. So we'll first do an overview of the development and give you some details about what it is we have planned from a, from a housing and residential perspective. Then we'll go into drainage and talk about a review of the current or undeveloped drainage or runoff situation on this property and the future or post-development runoff situation. Then we'll go into some specifics about the actual improvements themselves and show you how it works. And then we'll turn it over to the public comment section. Now, we did notice a number of concerns voiced through social media prior to the meeting and we took note of some of those and I will try to address those as we go through the presentation, so I might stop and do a quick sidebar from time to time if it's, if it's in context with some of the concerns that we saw, okay? So just a real quick review of some of the contributors to this project to date. Again, I'm with the ownership group. Our lead consultant is Thomas Stroh and he's here with us tonight. Thomas has done dozens of projects throughout Texas and beyond over several decades of time. Brings a lot of experience to the project. Our lead engineering firm is Elevation Land Solutions and from their office in the Woodlands tonight, we have John Unterrainer, who runs that office. And the, the engineer in charge of our project with them is actually a former proud Lumberton Raider and that's Garrett Duhon, welcome home Garrett. The next firm down is, oops, sorry. Schaumburg &amp; Polk is a Beaumont-based engineering firm, they helped us on the first few stages of our project. They're not currently active with us, but they remain available to help us with other projects as we, as we move along. And then the next two engineering firms don't actually work for us, they work for you. These are the firms that, that work for the city or the county and the mud. So I, I just list them here because they've been involved, they, they're familiar with our project. We've submitted a drainage plan to each of those firms, they have reviewed it and have approved it. So just to give you some sense of, of the amount of horsepower we have brought to bear in, in the presentation that I'm, I'm going to show you. Outside of engineering, we also have planning and architecture resources that I won't go into any great detail, no one is, is present here from those groups, but they do have significant experience throughout Texas and the greater Gulf region. So we, we have a lot of talent on board to make sure that we do this project right. And then as we get into advertising and marketing ourselves a little bit more, you'll hear more from Americom Marketing, they're a Beaumont-based firm. And with us tonight is Chrissy Roberts, she's our account executive, so she's a Lumberton native as well. So a lot of local connections as well as we reached outside, outside of the market for expertise where we needed it, again, to make sure we do this right. Moving on, so there seemed to be some confusion about exactly what the property is, so I wanted just to start off with a quick map. And I've got a pointer here, so everybody, if you can't see, this big pink area is Lumberton proper. Now, Lumberton does also extend down FM 421, which is sort of right here. The city park is here, the mud is over here. And so the yellow outlined area is our project area. So some statistics about the project, the total acreage that you just saw, the yellow area is a little over three thousand acres. There's a significant amount of drilling activity, there's pipeline rights of way and other, other kind of encumbrances on the property, so the real developable acreage is about two thousand six hundred. That sounds humongous, I, I understand that. But in reality, it, it gets broken into smaller pieces, which we'll talk about shortly. So for decades, this property has been a working tree farm. If you go out there today, you'll see trees everywhere, pine trees, that's what we're doing with it, it's a working tree farm and we mean to continue to operate it as such. So you'll see trees or, you know, logs leaving the property from time to time, that's just part of our active tree farm management. But within the tree farm, we want to develop a master-planned community with residential, commercial, and other uses. So what's a master-planned community? Well, it's, it's like a subdivision, but it's a super subdivision. And what separates master-planned communities from just a standard subdivision is the cohesive nature of the various phases. So we'll, we'll talk about that here shortly, how we stitch all those phases together so they make sort of make more sense and contribute more amenities and more cohesiveness to the community. To, to put some sense of scale to this, I mentioned we have about two thousand six hundred acres. We expect that will take fifty years or more to fully develop that amount of acreage, okay? So just our first phase is about eighty-five acres and two hundred and twenty-six lots. We expect that'll take about three years. So you can see, it sounds like a humongous project and it is only if you compress the timeline. It's really a series of small projects over a long period of time that reside or that, that ride on a common plan that ties everything together so that over the fifty-year period, it all makes sense at the end, okay? So that's the master-planned community concept. So if you come back in twenty years and you go out there, it'll still mostly be a working tree farm. There'll be homes, but it will still mostly be raw land with trees on it. So a little bit about the vision and values that we have. Sorry. Planned for the community. And these are all stock photos, so none of this is existing out there now, we, we, just to convey what our goals are, let's say. But the, the master planning feature allows us to have this connected community. And it can be walkable and very active because we, we add these phases and each of these phases ties into the other phase. We plan it ahead of time, so over time, you get this large enough number of rooftops, now you can add an activity center or some kind of amenity that the, that increases the, the utility of the development. Then you add in commercial, maybe later educational, you get a school site or something stitched into the community. So the idea of master planning, like I said, is to tie it all together, that's the advantage we have with a project of this size. Even though I won't be here, I don't think, in fifty years to see it finished, but you can, we can sort of start fresh and do it. I don't want to say do it right the first time, but you know, do it in a way that it all makes sense over time. Parks, ponds, and trails is a key component of our amenities, that's the connectedness I talked about. One of our core mission statement items is this five minutes to open space. So our goal is, from your home, you should be able to reach a park, a pond, a trail within five minutes walking distance, okay? And I mentioned that we're a working tree farm, we want to preserve that heritage and so we're not going to chop all the trees down. Our goal is to have, is to have these tree preservation buffers throughout the community to tie the community back to its original land purpose of a tree farm. The town center is a retail mixed-use concept different from sort of just the long string of strip centers that you see in so many communities, this is a more comprehensive approach to it. So within the same strip center, you might have a pediatrician, a dentist, the primary care, all those kinds of services along with a coffee shop or a restaurant or several restaurants. And inside that town center, there could be a common green space, so the kids can go play in the green area and the parents can kind of be lined up on the different, different businesses around it, keep an eye on the kids and, and share time together, okay? And then finally, as far as the housing options, I'll, I'll have a slide with a little bit more about that, but this is a high-quality focused community. This is not, we, we will have price points, various price points, but we aim to have, to, to meet very different the various different price points in the market, all at high quality, with high-quality construction. So I won't spend a lot of time on this slide, this is, this is, if, if you look, this is basically the twenty-six hundred acres we talked about. And I won't go into all the different colors, but just to show that this is the kind of planning we do with a master-planned community. These are your roads, trails, water, sewer, all these different color-coded things are different parts of the infrastructure. And so even though we're gonna, here's the city park, if you can see my pointer. Even though we're gonna start right here, we're, we're already thinking about the southwest corner, the northwest corner, et cetera, because we want those things to fit together when we're finished. I didn't mention this on the previous slide, but one of the, one of the nice things we can do with a project of this size is we're going to have a common fiber internet system throughout. It will be gigabit fiber to your home. That, the fiber is also tied into the natural gas such that there's a natural gas generator onsite that runs the fiber, so as long as you have a battery backup in your home to run your router, you will never lose internet in this community. There, I don't know, I'm not going to get into a long discussion about internet, but there are these major trunk lines, kind of like pipelines that run around the country. And two of them run through this property, so you're basically going to be hotwired into a broadband situation that doesn't go down. And there'll be wifi in the public spaces, we can do that too with that feature. I'll, I'll touch on one concern real quick, this is the first slide, I think, that sort of addresses a concern, there was, there were more than one concerns mentioned about traffic. And specifically Keith Road, someone I think was concerned that this would make Keith Road a nightmare. Well, you, you can see here, again, this is just very preliminary planning, but we do have a couple of connections down here on the southeast corner, the southwest corner, those could connect to Keith Road in the future. But those are actually going to make Keith Road traffic better because you don't have to go out to the highway and up into Lumberton, you can cut through the subdivision to four twenty-one and to Lumberton. So that's, that's a positive for traffic on Keith Road. Just a quick slide, again, these are, these are all just stock photos, nothing is out there today, no homes, but just to give you an idea of some of the quality and the features that we might include in our architectural portfolio. We are, I didn't dwell on it when, on the introductions tab or the slide, but we are employing a professional architecture firm. So all of these homes will be architecturally designed. Okay, so that's, that's the blurb on the development, now we'll talk about drainage. First, I'm just going to kind of go through this slide, has some, some sort of statistics, facts, and figures about drainage in, 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 in sort of an abstract concept. The objective as a developer, when we address drainage, this is our first bullet, is we aim to reduce the stormwater runoff rate, which is, in other words, we're going to over-detain the runoff in the post-development condition. Alright, in other words, make it better than it is today in its natural state, that's our goal, and I'll explain how we'll do it. So when, when doing these drainage studies that the engineers, like I said, the city and county engineers have to approve, we consider what's known as a one percent chance storm. Some people have heard it called a hundred-year storm. The technical term is one percent chance, there's a one percent chance supposedly every year that this storm might occur. And that is a, a storm that dumps sixteen point six inches of rain in a twenty-four-hour period. So that's a lot of rain in twenty-four hours. It's interesting to note that only about one and a half inches of rain gets absorbed into the ground. If it keeps raining after that, and I don't mean over several days, I mean, you know, like continuous rain event. Anything after about an inch and a half can't go into the ground, it has to runoff. So fifteen out of about sixteen point six inches is runoff. So you can see that in the developed condition, the runoff amount isn't that much different than in the undeveloped condition. The really big difference has to do with the speed that a, a development will shed its water because it just hits the ground and starts moving immediately, right? So what we do as designers is we have to store and slowly release that water and we do that by building detention features. That may be ponds, channels, control structures. The water eventually will make it into the watershed, but at a much slower rate, and I'll demonstrate that shortly, so that it, it has a I always get confused saying this, a positive impact on flooding, okay? In other words, it makes it better than it is in its natural state. And that's basically what my final comment here reinforces, is that by developing correctly, you can improve the runoff situation from the natural state. Okay, I'm back to this slide again because we're going to get into a little more detail about the features of the property. So you remember this slide and here's, here's where we are. So I didn't point out a few things before, but on, on the last time I showed you this slide, but all this blue area here and along here, that's all floodplain. So most of you are familiar that Lumberton is bound on the east side by floodplain, can't grow that way. And again, I said four twenty-one comes through here, this is Boggy Creek. This is Black Creek and then Pine Island Bayou down here. So you'll notice that in the yellow bordered area, there's very little blue. I, can I get a show of hands, how many people here have either heard or just have learned over time that the property we're talking about here is either flat or bowl-shaped, it's just a swamp? Anybody heard that before? Okay. So we'll talk about elevation next, thank you for bringing that up. Before I go to that slide, let me we'll talk about that too, thank you, we'll talk about that too, that's in, that's in a, a slide, couple, couple of slides from now. So just, we're going to talk about elevation of the property and the shape of the property next. Before I get to that slide, let me do a little bit of explaining how we arrived at this information that I will show you next. We spent a considerable amount of money to have an airplane fly over the ground shooting a laser at the ground. It's known as LiDAR survey. And the laser can go through the trees, so you get a very detailed and accurate and high-resolution image of the topography of the property, okay? So you can see very small changes in elevation. And then the computer converts those elevations into different colors, so you get what we call a heat map. So I'm about to show you the heat map. The heat map has a couple of extra features that I'm going to point out, so we're, I'll tell you to ignore those for just a second, but first, let's look at the elevations of the property. Okay, so ignore the blue arrows for me for just a second, please. Otherwise, the, the elevations are color-coded, like I said, and you can see kind of the key over here, and so you can see those colors represented on the heat map. You might be surprised to learn that from its very highest point, which is up here in the north corner, to the lowest point, which is down in the south or the extreme east, this property drops thirty-two feet. And you might wonder, well, why doesn't water run from this high point down to the low point? It's because there's a ridge in the center of the property right here. If you look at those colors, those are the forty-six, forty-four, forty-two, forty-foot elevations, okay? So what happens is water, now you can look at the blue arrows. Water either runs, this is kind of like the Rocky Mountains going through your property, right? So all the water either runs to the Pacific or runs to the Atlantic. So these blue arrows demonstrate if water were to hit the ground and start running off, where would it go? In a natural condition, okay? You can kind of see these little red outlined areas, don't get too bogged down in those, those are just kind of like little compartments of drainage. So each one of those essentially has its own drainage feature to it, but the big blue arrows kind of give you a sense from, and again, to point out, here's the city park. Here's where we plan to start our first phase, this is the mud over here, that's, back there is the main Lumberton proper. So you can see that water, this is, this is Boggy Creek going through here. Water flows into Boggy Creek, also water flows down to Black Creek and, and to Pine Island Bayou. Okay? So this next slide is the same overall area that I just showed you. But now I've dropped in kind of this long-term fifty-year development plan, so you see these different color-coded pods. I know I'm using a lot of colors and they mean different things, so sorry, but just, just for now, these are just sort of the long-term phase planning colors. And so you, you look at that, that previous slide and you say, okay, well, as we get started, how do we manage the water? Because we're, we're biting off eighty-five acres on a two thousand six hundred acre track. There's not really anything we can do if we're starting here about what's going on down here, okay? It's just too far away, we can't, we can't affect the drainage over there. So you decide, well, let's, let's see if we can bite off an area and build detention features that can control the runoff within that area. So we picked about five hundred and fifteen acres. Again, here's the city park, you can't see it on the map. Again, here's the city park, you can't see it on the map, but that's where it is. We're going to start in our phase one right here. And we, we outlined in red, like I said, about 515 acres. If you look at the calendar, this is, these are years over here, if you match up the colors, we're talking about 10 to 12 years of development. So we're, our first phase of drainage, if you will, is that long of a time horizon. We're planning that far ahead. The, the, we're calling this the northeast drainage area, and it will, all the runoff will flow out to Boggy Creek. And you, you will see, you'll see in the next few slides that creek wood and crestwood are affected by this drainage area. But it might be in a way you are surprised to find out, okay? So this is the same area I just showed you, but now I've given you even new colors to consider. Basically, within that 515 acres, and again, here's the city park. In, in those 515 acres, there's about five main drainage basins that reside in there. And so you see, we've color coded those five different ways, and you can see they're flowing all different directions. So on this map, you can see creek wood to the right and crestwood to the south. So as it is today, this is the current natural condition. Water flows in five different directions, including through creek wood and through crestwood. All right? Yeah, just a second. So before I leave the slide, let me just point out to you one quick number here. Again, in that 1% chance rain event, the sum of these five arrows in terms of runoff is 720 cubic feet per second. It's not really important to try to mentally figure out what 720 cubic feet per second is. It's a lot. Just remember 720. Oh, I'm sorry, I've got a couple of concerns there at the bottom of the slide I might address real quick. There, one, somebody posted a picture of, of water on 421, and I think they referred to it as swamp water. That picture was taken right where this green arrow is pretty much, okay? So it is true, in this 515 acre area currently today, undeveloped, water does flow to the north. It eventually makes it to Boggy Creek through here. But for now, it flows to 421. That water in that photograph was in the ditch on 421, which is Texas DOT property, that's not ours to manage or change. That, the only culvert under 421 is over here that goes through the park, so that water has to kind of work its way down that ditch and across. We did go out and check out that site a few day, after, a couple of days after we saw the post. The water was gone, the grass is there, you can go look at it today. It's right across from that, that little pump site that's next to the city park. You can look at it today, it's dry. So it does take some time to drain that out, because there's not a culvert under the ground, under the road right there, but it does drain. I can't see my other concern, so I think we'll just have, oh, there was somebody that, that made a concern that this is just a way to push water onto other neighborhoods. Actually, that's what's happening right now. In the undeveloped condition, water runs off of this property into creek wood and into crestwood. But we can fix that. So I'm still talking about the same 515 acres. Now I'm showing the detention features that we intend to install to reduce the runoff. Does, you remember the number I gave you on the previous slide, 720 cubic feet per second? When these pond features and the other detention features that we install are installed, that runoff will be reduced to 351. That is less than half of the current runoff rate. So just to be clear, there's a difference between volume and rate. Right? Rate has to do with speed, but speed is the problem. We, we, it's still going to runoff and into Boggy Creek. It's just going to do it at a much slower rate than it does today, okay? You'll also notice that all of the water, I mean, I'll go back to the other slide. Okay, this is the same area, you got water flowing here, flowing here, flowing south. When we're finished, it only flows out here. Here's Boggy Creek right here. Okay, it gets detained and metered into the creek at a much slower rate. You'll notice it no longer flows to creek wood and crestwood. We'll capture all of that water and send it into Boggy Creek under a managed condition, okay? Now, we're not, you can see all this gray area, that's not in our 515 acres, and we're not managing that yet. That's 10, 12 years ahead. We, we, we can't, we can't go build the entire detention day one. That'll happen as we move out, but remember, there's a ridge right here. Okay, so none of the water here will flow down to crestwood and creek wood anymore, and once, once this is finished. Now this, again, is not day one, this is like, like I said, a 10-year time horizon, but we're already started. I think somebody made a concern posted about excavation already underway. And that is true. These are pretty significant detention features to achieve the objective that we have for ourselves, which is to cut the rate in half in this drainage area, so we have to get started. So we have been excavating dirt, that is true, but that's just because it takes a long time to excavate dirt. We need to get ahead of the game. And we are committed to stay ahead. As we roll out subsequent phases, we will always be ahead of where we need to be in terms of detention, controlling that rate of, of storm water flow. I'm getting near the end, so we're getting close to the public comments. Let me just kind of give you a sense of sort of, again, back to the scale concern or issue. We've been talking for the last several slides about this 515 acre drainage area. On this map, that's this little orange spot right here. The yellow border here and here represent the outlines of the Boggy Creek and Black Creek drainage areas. So to put things into scale, our prop, this is just our 515 acres. That is less than 2% of the Boggy Creek watershed. I don't, I don't indicate how much a percent of the Black Creek watershed it is, because we don't contribute to Black Creek. Today, it goes into Black Creek, but once we're finished, it won't. It'll go, like I said, only into Boggy Creek in this particular 515 acres. This big green area, which goes up to near a town, I think called Segno, anybody know Segno? It's a long way away. This is the Pine Island watershed. Our little 515 acres is less than 0.1% of that watershed. And you might also notice, we're basically on the, on the five yard line, we're almost at the end. So whereas we can and will control the runoff in our developed area and make it better, to be honest, in the scheme of things, we're a very small part of a very large water drainage, okay? And then my last slide is just, just a kind of color picture again, showing our phase one, if you're curious about, about where it is and what more details. This is the city park again, 421 running by, and this is, this is kind of the layout of the streets and the homes. The different colors are different sized lots. And you'll see that our, our first part of our, this is where they're digging today, is excavating this pond, so that all this water, when it's developed, it'll run down into this pond, and it'll work its way this way, get slowed and stored and slowly released into Boggy Creek. That concludes my comments. At the bottom of this slide is my personal email and my personal cellphone. You're welcome to write it down. You can call me anytime, please not after midnight, but call me, I will answer the phone and happy to answer any questions or address any concerns that I can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Next, we will hear citizens' comments concerning the presentation. Each person will have a limit of three minutes to speak. And I just want to remind you that we ask you to identify yourself and approximately what area you live in. Again, we don't need your address, but if you live on Keith Road, we'd like to know that. If you live on 421, or if you live in North Silby, we'd like to know that too. So at this time, if you'll raise your hand, if you want to come, comment, and I'll call you up to the microphone right here at the podium. Yes, ma'am, come forward.
Okay, my name is Lisa Johnston. Live at 10819 Pep Road, which is now Robert Lane. We've been flooding since, when I, when I first moved here, 22 years ago, and worse floodway told me it was 1994. It was horrible, and I actually heard people talk about it today. And we had Allison, and I talked to Judge Caraway, and he told us it would get better, never had. Then it was just after Ike also, then a couple more times. Then after Harvey, which was hell on earth, the berms were never cleaned out behind Old Concord. They come up to a hard word in some areas, almost 12 feet high. So in the back of our area of Cooks Lake Road and Old Concord, the drainage has not even ever cleaned out. And you can now still see this stuff from Harvey. So if you keep slashing and adding concrete and not putting a place for this water to go for real drainage, and having an idea like pumping oil, we should learn how to pump water. Then it should be like getting care of the saltwater barrier. And we never should have to worry about being flooded again. We used to have, and then once every 10 years, it's now happening three times a year. So every time you put in a new construction, as in the Walmart and stuff like that, and I was told it would be okay. Well, it's not okay, and we are flooding, and we are flooding bad. So, and every time it rains, it's not from the dams to the Gulf anymore. The mentality should be, what are we going to do with the water? How are we going to save the people? You're putting lives in danger. Thank you.
Yes, sir, in the red shirt, and then behind you in the blue shirt, you'll be next, so if you want to come on down and get ready.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Jim Philp. I live what's commonly known down at the Y in the area of Mitchell Road. My comments this evening are in regards to mainly drainage, but many other topics also. So you'll permit me, I'll, I'll go for my notes. The main concern of a lot of residents, and I'll speak for myself, for me, is this development plus all the other developments that there'll be. Nobody here right now is responsible for other developments, certainly not this group of people, because they're talking about one type of development. What's on all of our minds as residents is this project may put something in Boggy Creek and do it in a controlled manner, but so is every other project that's going to be done. That's how development works. So while we have numbers, while we have good things that we see in studies like this, we have to step back because we're not a developer for one project and try to take on the totality of what's happened in our homes during Harvey, Imelda, and some of these other things. One of the things that I haven't seen covered, many of you, some of you may know that I served as Lumberton's Fire Marshal for 18 years. There will be a stress put on emergency services, but that's growth. That's how that works. It would be nice to know that somebody is going to start looking at that. Fire, EMS, law enforcement. Will there be additional tax monies generated by residences? Absolutely, there will for those organizations. Whether or not we'll be able to continue to respond to some of the same things that we currently respond to with additional residences, something we haven't heard yet. Drainage retention ponds are great. Sometimes the dirty little secret about retention ponds, however, is when they are metered to something, sometimes they're not metered. Sometimes the outflow valves are rusted in position and open position. We have questions about those kinds of things now. We never used to. Typically, it does retard the runoff. More and more projects need to continue to retard the runoff. But it's still the full volume that's going to get into the system. Does time help us? Is it our, is our ally? Yes, it is. But one project that shows that they can meter it properly and keep it down to a great percentage may not be so much with the next project. The traffic, I appreciate the traffic information. You'll be able to cut through until such time as somebody tells us that we can't cut through anymore.
Thank you, Jim. Sir, come on up, and who's next?
Good evening, Judge, Commissioners, and all my neighbors. My name is Mike Barfield. I do live in the same neighborhood as Jim. I've been here for 24 years. We all want to see Lumberton grow, Hardin County grow. I can appreciate what's happening here. I think if anything, this Harvey and this recent freeze have taught us that Mr. Hoffman, it's not enough to look at simply what happens when we get 16 and a half inches of rain, what happens when we get 50 inches of rain? And Allison, my neighborhood, had about four homes flooded with 36 inches. Now you fast forward to Harvey in 2017, and with 14 additional inches of rain, every home in the neighborhood flooded. And while I can appreciate that the county has a vested interest in attracting citizens and developments and increasing the tax rolls, so there's a benefit for the county, it must be weighed against the overall good for everyone concerned. And while detention ponds and engineering surveys are great, and I'm no engineer, it seems clear to me that some of what we're talking about, even with metering water, benefits that neighborhood. What about my neighborhood? Because here's what I know. When you build this development, they're not going to say, let's keep our house flat. No, sir, they're going to say, let's build up a little bit higher, let's build up a little bit higher. So when you look at that 0.1%, well, if you draw that line around the rest of it and measure as rain falls and accumulates, along with natural runoff and drainage from the north, there's going to be in my mind a damning effect by the raised subdivision and/or other developments out there. That means that water now, in addition to the metered water into Boggy Creek, which is a bad word to a lot of us, it's going to cause accumulation throughout the rest of that natural area. Some of that is dammed up by debris from Harvey and other things over the years. So while I appreciate, and I want to say this, I'm going to say this at the beginning, I appreciate Judge McDaniel. His leadership has been impeccable through unprecedented times in Hardin County, and I think we all benefit from that. And as I rebuilt from Harvey, they made it easy with not having to have certain permits. Commissioner Roberts and the precinct increased the drainage, which is working far better than what it used to. But what I would hate to see is increased rainfall amounts, natural runoff pushing up against this proposed development, and then backwashing flowing and standing into our neighborhoods. And of course, Jim mentioned the emergency services and other things. So I hope those will weigh into the county's decisions, and that's all I have to say. Thank you for this opportunity.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. I like the vision, okay? I know that planned communities like this can be very successful. I lived in the Northern Virginia and Maryland areas, and they are very good, and they raise the surrounding area property values. But I am for mitigation of downstream impacts that will be caused by any development, mainly a met, a development of this size, even if it's over 20 years or 50 years. And I do understand that, I've watched these planned communities in those areas over 20 and 30, period, I've lived there that long. Right now I live in, or I do have property down in Rose Hill Acres, which is along Boggy Creek, so it's a substantial area that was flooded along with areas of Keith Road and Cooks Lake Road. So by the 421 development, if not properly executed and planned, and mainly executed, it will cause problems, whether it be in my generation, my lifetime, or anybody else's. Because as we know, the, the water levels are rising. You can see it on the coast, you can see it everywhere. A couple of things I think you have misinformed about, or the assumptions just aren't correct. One thing I want to say is the minimum to maximums, there's no percentages there. You don't have a percentage, is it 80% on the minimum of elevation and 20% on the maximum? Where do those higher elevations come from? Because typically, as you get closer to the coast, it's going down, down, down. It starts up at about one, over 100 up in the lakes area, and as you come down. And as you come downstream, you get down to Evadale at Natchez. You're like at 20 something. Here's some numbers to keep in mind when you're looking at that minimum and maximum. Okay? Um, 1994, the flood elevation was about 19, a little over 19 feet. That had flooded, I think it was 19.5. So in 2017, Harvey was 25.16. So these are the elevation numbers you're looking at. If your development is anywhere close to that, guess what? You're going to have to raise it. Guess what happens when you raise it? You're pushing your waters down. Okay, one more thing. Harvey was not the highest level at Rivadale at Natchez. In 1884, it was 26.2. So that means that all of Lumberton was underwater and probably going out to Sire Lake and most of the areas of Beaumont. All right? The assumption that in Harvey, the waters came from undeveloped areas is wrong. I'm sorry, it is wrong. I was there, I witnessed it. I watched the clear waters come in the front yard. And it was clear water coming from the north, coming from the east, over from areas of 96 and 69. So that assumption is wrong. Thank you. My name is Ingrid Paples.
Thank you, Ms. Paples. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jamie. I live on the front of Keith Road. I've been in Lumberton the vast majority of my life. Um, we live on the front of Keith Road on Boggy Creek in Zone X, which is the same flood zone as the development. And in Harvey, which was not a 100-year flood, it was a thousand-year flood, I think is what they put it at now. There was 12 feet of water on that property. In 94, I believe there was like two. And everybody was built higher. My main concerns are, one, all the water in Lumberton right now as we speak, all the water in Lumberton from all the new developments are already coming directly to Boggy Creek. I mean, there's no way to stop that. They're all, they were redirected wrong 50 years ago or more. They're going the wrong way. The integrity of this project is the problem I have more than anything. Because we have developers all over Lumberton all the time. Those developers aren't offering hush money basically, or hey, who's all out? Who's against it so we can get ahead of them before this public forum? Or why don't you get somebody to run against one of the commissioners? The integrity of the project is a problem for me. And I'm not going to let my community think for one second that that's not an issue and that that's not happening. Also, yes, you are extracting tons of dirt, getting it on the highway. And there's been two wrecks so far that I know, that I know of from that extraction of the dirt. The company that's extracting your dirt drained for seven days, drained their ponds into Boggy Creek in, in the middle of the flood. Steadily flowing. Got video, think there's drone footage from the news. Into Boggy Creek while it was rising. Y'all mentioned Crestwood and Creekwood several times. Okay, they didn't even flood the way the rest of Keith Road did. Everything already goes to Boggy Creek. So y'all proposing that it go to Boggy Creek doesn't help us at all. If anything, it makes us even more scared of what's going on. We are going to grow. We're growing right now. The Heights Division, which is in Lumberton North on that side, I was there yesterday. Their retention ponds do not pump out brand-new houses almost flooded in this last little rain. Who, who's responsible for that once it gets done? And that developer is actually from here, knows people connected and, and the city, like it's going between the city and the developer. And those people are going to flood. They had water coming in the grudges of their brand-new houses in a brand-new addition in the middle of Lumberton behind Sonic. So what's going to happen to those of us outside? I got a bunch more, but I can write it online and put it in our, thanks, guys.
I understand there's a gentleman in the black shirt. Who's next over here?
My name's Mike Hansen. I live on Roland Hills. I've been out there 20 something years. And this last little rain we had wasn't real big. But south end of Park Road had water over it part of the time. Boggy Creek, the bridge there came within seven inches of coming over that. You know, we're looking at the small picture, but we got those dams up there holding water too. Raven had been at 100% full for three months when we had that rain. Dam B, three months ago, was at 100%. When this rain started the other day, it was 98%. They got to release the water. So this thing about Boggy Creek and all that. And also, if you go look at Boggy Creek right now, look at all the trees that are falling in the creek right now. Water, water's not coming out of there. That rain quit. Boggy Creek didn't start dropping for two days. And then it started dropping an inch every two or three hours. So you know, you're talking about development, you're talking about rain. I know that young lady right there, when, when I went through Harvey, my neighbor built his house up three foot. And he started flooding my property. So what do you do? You go to those people. And there's nothing. You end up, they were told to do certain, that property. Did they hit that guy ever do it? No. The same thing's going to happen here. So I had to put in a, a drainage system. I had to put a sump pump in. Now, who's going to help us when they do the same thing, start flooding these properties again like that? That's all I've got to say.
Thank you, sir.
Judge Commissioners, thank you for the meeting. Uh, my name's Ed Martin. I live at the end of Keith Road. I've been down there for about 16 years. These people behind me are correct. These creeks are not draining like they used to. There's a lot of debris in these creeks. This community, I believe, is only going to make that drainage even worse. I know that's not on you. Without a drainage district, none of that's going to get fixed. Whole nother topic. As far as his traffic survey goes, you're way off on that one. With Keith Road, it's already traveled well for a ballpark. You may not be aware of the fact, but Lumberton's a bedroom community to Beaumont. Everybody goes south to work, they all come back north to go home. If they can avoid going up the Y to 421, they're going to come right by my front door. That road's not meant for that kind of traffic. The county doesn't have the funds to do that road for that kind of traffic. That problem won't work. You're not going to be able to fix that. As far as the drainage goes out there and the rains, we don't need to add dirt to an area and push water downstream. Every, all water seeks lowest point. It's all trying to get to the Gulf, to the rivers. I don't care if you point it east, west, or whatever. It's going to come through Boggy Creek and Pine Island Bio. And it's going to rise. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Good evening.
Good evening. Um, my name is Stacy Swearingen. I live off of Cooks Lake Road on Peck Road. I've been here my whole life. That's 51 years. My family's been here for at least 100. What I'm going to tell you is your 1% chance of rainstorms and your, your 500-year floods, your 1,000-year floods, um, that doesn't mean one in 1,000 years, we will get a flood. That means with every storm, there's a 1 in 100% chance, a 1 in 500% chance, and a 1 in 1,000. Guess what? I've lived through them all. I'm 51. And I see it at least three times a year. And if you think for one minute that your slow contribution to Boggy Creek within 10 to 20 to 50 years is going to make a difference, maybe you weren't out there in the last three weeks. Because let me tell you something, that water is still high. There's rain coming. It'll be here this weekend. And um, I'm pretty sure it really doesn't care what you have planned for the next 10 years. It's all going to the same place. When it backs up, we back up. When the Natchez is backed up, the Bio's backed up. There's nothing about your drainage that's going to make that better. You can wrap it up in a bow. And I'm telling you, there's no one on the south side of this county who's ready to, to support it. It's not going to happen. Second of all, when you get these floods and the judge has to come in and say, hey, voluntary evacuation. Hey, mandatory evacuation. You going to go in there with boats and get them out because you're extra 3,000 people or more? I guarantee you, our infrastructure cannot handle that. We are not prepared with emergency management to do that. And I don't think you're ready within the next five to 10 years to bump that up. So what I can tell you is, is that as a tree form, the trees, the roots, that all helps with water management. When you remove it little by little, that drainage and that flooding becomes worse. And we've been here. And if you think we're ready for you to flood us out, we're ready for you to stop us from getting back and forth to our livelihoods every day because of your traffic? No, not going to happen. As a show of hands, who's against this? Prove me wrong.
Is there anybody over here who wants to speak? Anyone over here? Okay, you're next. After Mr. Man.
Judge, committee of court. Thank you very much. Chief, I might need a escort out. I'm kidding. Hey, uh, listen, we don't have a drainage district here. That is a huge problem for us, okay? We all sat here during Harvey. I, I'm a Lumberton resident. We sat here, I was waiting on a boat to come by with animals in it. Because I thought, oh, my gosh. I've never seen rain like this in my whole life. And the fact that we don't have a drainage district, I have visited with Mr. Hoffman. And I wish that he had time tonight to lay out the whole plan because we're just seeing a portion of it. But I'm thankful that we have a developer that's coming in here that cares about the issues that we are all dealing with, with the flooding. And that he's going to do everything they can to be a good neighbor. And um, I think he's proceeded with caution and concern on every level. And let's just say he throws a towel in and leaves because Lumberton can't, we, we don't want any development. Then these tracks will be sold off and we'll still have the same issues we have right now. The next Harvey that hits will be an island. Nobody can get out. We'll be here just like we were. When do we start? We, you, you know, you go to New Orleans, I'm watching ships go by my head, six feet over my head. And they deal with a problem and talk about being in a bowl. Um, I appreciate the fact that, that this long-leaf development is, has this approach that they care and they're, they care enough to come here and take the hits tonight and listen to us share. Is it going to be perfect right away? No. But if they decide to split this 3,200 acres up and sell it off and tracks, guess what? We're stuck with what we have right now. And there'll be no drainage improvement. Not, we haven't seen it. Uh, we're all proponents of a drainage district, but it's a huge undertaking. You know, our taxes have to be, we have to, somebody has to pay for this. It's not, nobody can wave a magic wand and make this problem go away. And I'm not, I can't believe I'm not taking three minutes. But I just wanted to say that tonight and encourage everybody to have an open mind to look at some of this. Hey, I muddied out houses. I was there with you guys. We went down Callahan Road to help friends and anybody we could during the hurricane. Uh, drove to Katrina, Harvey, everywhere we've gone to try to help people. And, and sometimes when you live in that area, I just say, thank God we're in southeast Texas where everybody cares. And we pick up a shovel and an axe or a hammer and we help each other. And we're not in California tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Man.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Boyd. I live on Hooks Road. I actually live in the middle of town. I'm not south. And I'm concerned about the drainage. I'm concerned about the flooding. Not necessarily just with the addition of all these homes, but how is the city going to address the existing drainage issues that we have? Not even just south of this proposed development in town. I've made several phone calls, I've taken pictures where we have water standing in ditches for days. And nobody's come out to address them. I also have the same concerns about emergency services. We are not equipped to handle this. So where's the plan to increase the police presence, the fire department? Where is that plan? Our post office can't freaking deliver mail right. So how in the heck are we going to handle another however many thousand homes? So again, I don't live south. I live right here in the middle of town. And I have the same concerns that everybody else has.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? You're next. Go ahead, ma'am.
Sorry, Stacy. Um, good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to speak for just a minute. Um, someone on social media, I think, said it best. And we screenshot it because I'd like to read it to you now. I'll say it once and I'll say it again. No matter how much drainage efforts they put in, it's going to exasperate existing flooding problems. You have Village Creek, Natchez Flood Plains to the east, Pine Island Bio to the south, and Boggy Creek to the west. There's only so much development that can take place without threatening the existing city with more flooding. First steps should be improving the current city's flood issues and not create a 3,000 acres plus of development. Obviously, the new development is going to exasperate the current flooding issues, learn from other cities' mistakes, like in areas that have been developed in the Houston area that have had devastating floods and not commit the same mistakes here. Thank you for your time.
I didn't get your name. What's your name?
I'm sorry. Kim Glaver on Peck.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to speak?
Uh, my name is Laura Riddle. And I live on 421, um, just past actually the Lumberton boundaries. But we primarily do everything in Lumberton. Um, one of our neighborhood's concerns is that Lumberton is basically two main roads. You have 96 and 69, and that's it. Not only do these help Lumberton, but we have traffic from Coons and Salisbury and Evadale that are already backing up these roads. Now, the current project to widen these things has, has helped. It has helped a lot to ease the flow of traffic. I used to sit uh, halfway, you know, between Beaumont and Lumberton on the freeway, trying to get home every night, um, as I teach in Beaumont. But now you add 225 more homes that are all going to 421 or heaven forbid, Keith Road. Um, that's, if you have three cars per home, that's 750 cars additionally on our roads. That's just this development. And that's just the first phase. What about 500 more homes? What happens when the people who purchased in these new developments now have traffic going through their neighborhoods? It's most likely that these people are going to be upset with all the traffic coming through. Thank you.
Anyone else that wants to speak? Please raise your hand. Yes, sir.
Uh, my name is Mike Leach. I live, not in a flood area now. I did live in Artisan Acres for 35 years. Flooded twice, 94 and Harvey. It's not so much the water coming down, it's the water backing up. In 94, I flooded. And it was three days after the rain quit, the water from Pine, from Pine and Bio just backs up because of the Natchez and Pine and Bio. It's not cleaned out either as well as Boggy Creek. Uh, so I don't think anything can be done to solve the drainage issue. This little small area he's talking about. This little smaller area he's talking about can't improve the drainage. It's not gonna solve that. Also have big concern about the traffic. As she was talking. The state takes forever to do anything to widen our roads. Had a long-term project years ago, the old railroad track easement to put East Tex over there and bypass Lumberton to take traffic off of 69 and 287. Everybody going to Coons and Woodville and up north, they all come through Beaumont. I mean, the state just now widened 421 to four lanes from 421 to the Y. How long did it take them to do that? We'll fight traffic for 10 years before the state'll do anything. So I'm against it unless y'all can get the state to come in and say, we're gonna widen 421 to four lanes for this traffic and we're gonna put in an expressway from their development along the, or put in their expressway along the old railroad track from 421 to East Tex, which would be their first part of their long-term plan anyway. So I, I think because of the traffic, I'm against it. And like I say, I don't think they can do anything to stop the flooding and the drainage.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Renell Clubb. I'm not here to deliver comments. I have a question for Patrick or his engineers. Have your engineers determined what amount of acreage will pitch to Boggy Creek? And what amount of acreage will pitch south to Brown Branch and then on to Black Creek? Some, I'm sorry, but some of that will bypass Boggy Creek. So I'm sorry, do you have the answer? So I could get that information from you at another time? All right. So let me be clear. It's my understanding some will be drained to Boggy Creek, especially the first portion of the development. But ultimately, as you work towards the southwest side, where it wants to pitch naturally to the south and to the southwest, is that going to be drained into Brown Branch, which will drain into Black Creek, which will then drain on into Pine Island Bio? Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Clubb. Good evening.
Thank you. I'm Connie Renando. I live at the very end of Keith Road, the back end. My question is, what street do you intend to cut through to your subdivision?
He'll be able to address that when he talks here in just a few minutes. That way everybody can hear you. I'll ask him to address that.
Yes, I would like to know what street you intend to cut through. And as far as the flooding, we were told we would never flood where we are. But with Harvey and 60 inches of rain, you know, that's, that's gonna happen and this is not gonna help anything. So that's all I wanna know. I need to know the street.
Thank you very much.
I'm Melissa, I live off of Keith Road also. I know most everyone up here, so you know, I do not like to speak in front of people. However, y'all are not my neighbor, you're not my friend, and you're not my elected officials. And this is that, these eight people sitting before me are some of the finest people that I have ever met. They work tirelessly, day in and day out. If they cannot fix our flooding problem, why would I put my faith into you? Because all you're gonna do is push more back on us. So if I'm looking at these faces and they are working hard to do it, why would we let someone else come in and throw the water right back on us? This is where my faith lies. I think y'all are only serving yourselves.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Sandy Zook.
And after you, we have time for one more.
And I live on the corner of Beaverbrook and Timber Wolf, which is right, Boggy Creek's in my backyard. And I am from California and they're not all bad people. So anyways, yeah. I've been here 13 years. I was told when I bought the property from the Mr. Boss that it didn't flood back there. And then I hear from people, oh yeah, it's flooded this time or it's flooded that time. Well, I live across the street from Melissa. I only got nine inches of water in my house, which I'm very, I feel blessed because I felt bad because I let people use my right-of-way to pull boats and stuff and jet skis and stuff up. So believe me, these people in my neighborhood all help each other. But as far as the drainage part, I, it really scares me because, you know, we had water come over from the Lumberton mud. We had, I mean, I've never, it scared me to death. I have pictures that look like something from Time Magazine, it was that bad back there. My problem with it is, is that none of the creek, I mean, the trees are overgrown, our bridge is getting ready to collapse. And then you guys want, I, like I said, I'm from California, I know all about big subdivisions. I lived in a Lennar subdivision, so I know all about stuff like that. But if your drain is, your water and your drainage is gonna come over our way, which everything flows and goes our way. And I freak out now because of all this stuff. And yes, you guys, I, I mean, I've seen your faces numerous times trying to help people at the fire department that we have, that it flooded. I mean, you know, I feel sorry, like it, it, it breaks my heart to know that somebody wants to come in and do a big development when we can't even get the other stuff when we were, you know, I feel like we've been promised things, but nothing's happening. And I think that we need to get that situated before we start doing bigger and better things, you know? I think it's not fair to people that, like, some people have lived out there forever. And I've only been there 13 years. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anybody else? Mr. Wood? Did I miss anybody over here before?
First off, I need to apologize for being late. We had a big plow burst, I don't know if y'all are aware of that. We had hail and bad winds and everything, we just got the power back on, so I was making it late. Need to play a catch-up, I guess, a little bit. Hope we have some kind of information that we can get in a little while that will give us more to study. I don't know if y'all have covered it or not. How are we covering the drainage now as opposed to what happens? We are gonna have some probably, some runoff ponds, correct?
This is a comment period, it's not question and answer.
Oh, okay. Just wanna make sure that we cover all of that. We do have some problems with our floods in our area. I work them regularly and I'd like to make sure that we keep this in mind and we make sure that we get our drainage going beforehand and not afterwards. Like I said, apologize for being late, guys, the best I could do. Thank you, that's all I got to say.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Larry Poe. I lived here my whole life, my whole family's moved here on Cooks Lake Road in the 30s. And I watched it flood down on Cooks Lake Road back when I was a little bit of kid and my dad told me about stories. I apologize to you guys, y'all getting hammered for a lot of stuff that ain't y'all's issues. A lot of these issues started the Nature's River and all that needs to be fixed and widened out to the Pine and Bio and everything needs to be cleaned and widened out and stuff. I appreciate the fact that y'all are putting in some retention ponds, doing some things. I welcome your project. I think growth is always good for a town and especially a project like y'all are trying to put in. I moved out on 421 20-something years ago, just past y'all's project there. I know it's gonna be a lot of traffic. I actually moved out there to get away from the traffic on Cooks Lake Road and all that, to get out there in the woods. And it's already getting nuts out there, but I welcome it, you know, because I think growth is always good. If you ain't growing, you're dying. And I think that we need a drainage district more than anything for us. We need like a DD-7 like Beaumont has, it's taking care of those drainage canals and all that. So we, we got way bigger issues than you guys and I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Mr. Poe. I wanna thank everybody who took the time to make a comment. I wanna make sure that everybody understands that this group has heard everything you said. And I would say that this group sitting to our left has heard everything that you said tonight as well. And when we leave here this evening, you're gonna go home and there's probably people already doing it, posting on social media. They're gonna comb all that and they're gonna look at that as well. And I've asked them to do that. I've asked them to pay attention to the concerns that you have and to address those. And I think they've done a pretty good job of that tonight. And we're gonna give them a chance to come back up and speak for just a few minutes and give some closing comments. And those comments are gonna be in response to the concerns they've heard here this evening. So go ahead.
Thank you, Judge. And thank you, everyone, for all your feedback. We've been making notes and listening carefully. And we understand there's a lot of pain around flooding in this area. All we can control is what we can control. It's pretty clear from the feedback that there are forces beyond our control that are affecting you in the form of flooding. So what we can commit to do and what I have tried to illustrate in my slideshow is, we can make it better. We can't make everything go away. We can make it better. That's, that's as much as we can contribute to the outcome. So you're right, I mean, I referenced a 1% chance storm event with just 16.6 inches. If it rains 50 inches, I can't, I can't fix that. But like I said, the difference between natural and developed is an inch and a half. So you got a 50-inch flood or a 48-and-a-half-inch flood, it really doesn't matter. I, I can't control that, but like I said, even in the developed state, it wouldn't make a difference. So somebody asked about the connection to Keith Road? I have no idea. That's a conceptual plan. One thing that the benefit, you know, there were some people who thought, thought I was missed, I was off-base a little bit by expecting people to drive north to 421 and into Lumberton. I think if that was your destination, that would probably be better than going out Keith Road to the highway and then up. But I understand a lot of people go to Beaumont. But there's also an emergency evacuation issue. And right now that is Temple Road, Callahan Road, some people call it, it's dirt road. So a nice wide paved road for, if nothing else, emergency evacuation access would be a benefit.
Mr. Hopper, please proceed. Thank you. Are you done?
I thought you said you wanted to say something. Yeah, I don't have the answer to that, sorry. That's, it is a county road, you're right. I think that's really the, the main message is, we're trying really hard. We can make, we can make things better, but we can't change the world. And hopefully that over time, we can make improvements. Not us, but I mean, as a community, we can make improvements in drainage here and there. Extra tax money helps in that regard. Thank you. It, it's just a conceptual plan at this point. I don't have a road name, I don't, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure I understand the question. Yeah, we're only asking the, the county for approval for 85 acres and the 555, 515-acre drainage study. That, that's, that's the only thing in front of the, that we would submit. Thank you.
All right, once again, I wanna thank you for you coming out here this evening and listening to the concerns of the public. I think that you heard the majority of them. I think there will be some more. And as far as our next step goes, I think our next, next step would be, be to possibly have a workshop sometime in the future and make sure that we are able to answer these questions that people have that maybe didn't get answered here tonight. All right, at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Cooper to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. We're adjourned. I wanna thank the school again for hosting us tonight. Thank you very much for allowing us to use this building.